I'd like to call this meeting to order at 5:31. Roll call, please.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes, here.
Fisher Ellenberg?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Present.
Commissioner Avery? Commissioner Shoemaker?
Present.
Commissioner Kuznel?
Here.
Commissioner Wayhill?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here. At this time, I will turn the mic over to Commissioner Brown to introduce our invocation person.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we have a special guest, Pastor Philip Thompson, who will be coming from the University of Michigan Flint to give us our invocation. He is the Community Relations Manager there. So Pastor Thompson, if you could step up to the microphone there. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you so much, Dr. Brown. Appreciate that. I'm so honored to be here tonight. And I realize that we all have different faith traditions, so I invite you to pray in your faith tradition as I lead us before the throne tonight. Turn to God, our Father, we thank you for this day. We're so grateful for these fine folks who have been tasked with the responsibility for shepherding this county. I pray that you would give them a pristine wisdom as they deliberate the issues before them tonight and for the remainder of this year. We're mindful that one of our own is missing among us. We pray for her and for her family, for her safe return. God, we thank you for the prosperity, the possibilities, and even the problems that come along with serving. We ask that you would help us, in the spirit of justice and equality, to serve your people with dignity and with humility. All these blessings we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Approval of the minutes for September 27, 2023?
Move it. Support.
Moved and supported. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. This is the time set aside for public comment. Any person wishing to provide comment to the board may do so. We ask that you line up along the West Wall, and you'll have two minutes to speak. We ask that all speakers refrain from personal attacks against individuals. This is your time to be heard, and we can do it in a civil manner. Should any speaker engage in civil or personal attacks, I'll remind you of your requirements and ask you to please be in order. If the speaker continues to be out of order, I ask them to be removed from the meeting. Is there anyone wishing to address the public, or address us from the public? Please state your name and where you live.
Either one.
Either one.
My name is Emily Monaroso. I live in Grand Blank Township. I come to you today as a constituent looking for leadership from my elected officials. You are members of this body because Genesee County residents believe in your decision-making, and I believe we need it today. I ask you to consider Amy Fashionello of the Grand Blank School Board. Consider her presence in videos where she's attempting to push her way into the certification of our state's election. Consider her signature on documents that have been made publicly available. Consider her affirmative defense in several media news outlet sources. Grand Blank let residents, including myself, are trying our best to hold her accountable with a recall in our community. As I canvass my neighbors, I hear from them fear, frequent and firmly held concerns of fear, that our county is under the grip of somebody and somebodies who are willing to step outside of the norms of what we believe in, democracy, the rule of law, and the collective best of all. And so I ask each of you, and you as a body together, to consider endorsing our recall and stand up for democracy, not only in Genesee County, but in our state and in our nation, and be the leader for my children in Grand Blank Schools that their school board will not be at this time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment?
Good evening. Dominique Clemens, Flint Township, Michigan. I wanted to take a quick moment to thank the Board of Commissioners. I know you all get a lot of attacks often, but thank all of you for the work that you are doing specifically around diversity, equity, and inclusion in our county. And I would like to specifically thank Commissioner Shoemaker, Commissioner Ellenberg, Commissioner Winfrey, who all serve on the DEI Commission and pushing forward to make us an inclusive community, but want to specifically give a thank you to my county commissioner, Dr. Beverly Brown, who is, although not a member of the DEI Commission, serving to promote equity and inclusion every day in the work that she's doing, and going above and beyond as a commissioner to represent us in our district in creating this new partnership with the University of Michigan Flint to create even more resources for our residents, for our staff, without increasing our bottom line in the county. So thank you to all of you, especially those of you who are serving in a way to promote equity in our community.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Any other comments? See none?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could move an item up on the agenda and give public comment opportunity to the provost from U of M Flint, this is a good transition from what the county clerk just mentioned.
Yes.
Resolution number 2023-636 involves an approval of a memorandum of understanding between Genesee County and the University of Michigan Flint to provide for a strategic alliance for the purpose of promoting economic development, fostering economies of scale, and achieving DEI excellence. And so I'd like to ask for a point of personal privilege to invite Dr. Sonia Price, who is the provost for the University of Michigan Flint, to give public comment regarding this MOU.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I stand before you today to discuss a promising collaboration between the University of Michigan Flint and Genesee County Government. This MOU was born out of a mutual interest and a commitment to work together for the greater good of the people of our community. It's been a pleasure working in partnership with Commissioner Dr. Beverly Brown to bring this effort forward. The University of Michigan Flint was founded in 1956 and has since been dedicated to fostering education, research, and community engagement. This U of M Flint-Genesee County collaboration marks a significant step forward in our collaborative efforts to address critical issues within our community. The importance of working together in partnership cannot be understated. By joining forces, we can share resources, expertise, and knowledge to advance the greater good of our county. Together, we can address the pressing challenges that our communities face, whether it's in education, healthcare, economic development, or social services. Our collaboration will enable us to leverage resource, research capabilities, community outreach programs, and other resources for our shared commitment to the betterment of our region. I am so excited about the ways that we, in partnership, will advance our shared vision of a stronger, more prosperous Genesee County. Thank you for your time and your consideration of the MOU that is before you today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing that point of personal privilege. Would it be appropriate to take the vote on it now?
Yes, if someone would make the motion to approve it, we could...
So moved.
Support.
Grabbing discussion.
Just my appreciation to Dr. Brown for her involvement, her leadership, her tenacity in seeking out this partnership and others for the county.
Any other discussion? See none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. We'll move on to communications. Basically, resolution 2023 is 729 is a 2023 appropriation report by Melissa, Director of Equalization.
If someone could make a motion to move that resolution?
Move it.
And I'll read the resolution. Our next item of business is the consideration of the various matters required to be determined by this board under Michigan-complied laws, Section 211.37, as to the spreading of the 2023 tax levies. A tax apportion report to be considered also will include special assessments. The chair at this time recognizes Prosecutor David Leighton and authorizes him to conduct our proceedings, preparing for presentation of a resolution approving 2023 tax apportionation report.
One minute.
Yeah.
You got it.
Report. Director David.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Clerk Register, at this time, do you have ready to present to the board all the certified copies of statements and certificates and of records of votes and resolutions authorizing or directing monies to be raised in the townships, cities, villages, and other taxing units and agencies of Genesee County for township, school, highway, drain, and other purposes, all as delivered for the 2023 tax levy by the township supervisors or other tax assessing, collecting, or responsible certifying officers or agencies within this Genesee County? Do you, Mr. Clerk Register, at this time, also present the 2023 tax apportionment report for Genesee County, Michigan, as prepared by the Genesee County Department of Equalization?
Yes, I have the certificates and the tax apportionment report, and they are presented to this board.
Madam Chair, it would be appropriate at this time for you to declare a brief recess for the purpose of allowing the board members or any taxpayer present to examine the certificates, statements, papers, records, and 2023 tax apportionment report as presented to this board by the county clerk register.
At this time, this meeting is declared at recess at 5:44. Is brief recess. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter or look at it? We are on recess.
Anybody can look at the book of every taxation.
We'll call the meeting back to order at 5:45. So the recess has now expired, and this meeting is called back to order at 5:45. Prosecutor Leighton, please continue with the initial proceedings regarding the 2023 tax report.
Does any member of this board or any other person present wish to make any further examination of the certificates, statements, papers, and records, or the 2023 tax apportionment report, which were presented by the clerk register to this board just before it recessed? Let the minutes show that no one has indicated a desire to make any such further examination. Is there any taxpayer present who wishes to make objection to the raising of any of the money indicated in the 2023 tax apportionment report for Genesee County, or in any of the certificates, statements, papers, and records presented by the clerk register? If so, you may speak at this time. Let the minutes show that no one has indicated a desire to speak. Mr. Clerk Register, has this board, or have you, received any objection, oral, written, or otherwise, to the raising of any money set forth in the 2023 tax apportionment report for Genesee County, or in any of the certificate, statements, papers, and records you have submitted to us today?
No such objections have been received.
Let the minutes show that no objections have been made to the raising of any of the money set forth in the 2023 tax apportionment report for Genesee County, or in the certificate, statements, papers, and records submitted to this board today by the clerk register. Mr. Clerk Register, are you aware of any state tax or indebtedness of the county to the state, as should be apportioned upon the tax rolls, other than the six mil state education tax? Or have you or this board received any notice or any communication asserting any such tax or indebtedness to be owing?
I know of no such tax or indebtedness, nor of any notice or communication asserting any such to be owing.
Madam Chair, Equalization Director Melissa Hyduk wishes to make a few comments for the board's information.
Good evening. I just wanted to let you know that there are a couple of proposals on the November ballot that, if passed, would be levied on the 2023 winter tax bills. Grand Blank Township has police services millage replacement of 1.5 mils, and Goodrich Area Schools has a sinking fund millage proposal of 1 mil. If any of these millages are passed, it will be brought back to the Board of Commissioners, and the apportionment report will be amended to reflect the changes. Also, there will be revised special assessments that I'll receive from the local units. That's normal for this process, because some of them don't have the information until later in November to give me. So those will require amendments to the apportionment report as well. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, a resolution adopting the 2023 tax apportionment report would be in order at this time.
The resolution's been moved and supported, so...
Did we need a roll call, or just all? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. We'll go on to appointments. Resolution 2023-769, approval of one appointment to the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services Board, Genesee County, for a three-year term, expiring 9/27/26. We had one applicant, Siobhan Wilborn.
Forward.
We need a motion.
I thought you moved it.
Somebody needs to put the name in, nomination.
Nomination.
I will nominate Siobhan Wilborn.
I'll support it.
Any other nominations?
No one else put in, so...
Someone remind us of our policy. This is covered under our policy, right?
It is. It is covered under our policy, and we're following that policy in what we're doing here.
Okay. And we typically don't add names, because we've only got one, right? Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that. All those, yes.
Oh, Madam, I just wanted to make sure that we were going to temporarily suspend the individual votes and just vote collectively, since there's one person.
Right.
Okay.
We all vote together. Okay. All those in favor, Siobhan Wilborn. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Going on to Resolution 2023-771, approval of one appointment to the Genesee Health System Board for a partial term, expiring 3/31/24.
Madam Chair, I nominate Jamaica Patrick Singleton.
Any other nominations?
I nominate Jennifer E. Johnson.
Okay, we'll do... Any other nominations? I really got the two people, so... So we roll call on this?
Yep, and each individual commissioner will say the name of the person that they would like.
Fisher Lloyd.
Singleton.
Commissioner Winfrey.
Singleton.
Commissioner Ellenberg.
Johnson.
Commissioner Brown.
Johnson.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Singleton.
Commissioner Kuznel.
Johnson.
Commissioner Wayhill.
Patrick Singleton.
Commissioner Davis. Johnson.
The vote was two, or four for Johnson and four for Singleton, so nobody received the necessary five votes. So you have two options. According to your policy, we can kind of go, the top two vote-getters, which there was only two, continue, and you can go through and vote again.
So we'll go through the line again and vote again.
Yep.
Roll call.
Commissioner Winfrey.
Singleton.
Commissioner Ellenberg.
Johnson.
Commissioner Brown.
Johnson.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Singleton.
Commissioner Kuznel.
Johnson.
Commissioner Wayhill.
Patrick Singleton.
Commissioner Davis.
Johnson.
And Fisher Lloyd. Singleton.
We're still at 4-4.
Second verse, same as the first. You can either continue in this path until somebody wants to break, or you can postpone this to the next meeting.
I'd postpone.
What's the pleasure?
Do you need a motion to postpone?
No. Second.
I motion that we move this to our next meeting. Forward.
All those in favor? Any discussion?
I just want to make sure by not doing this, we're not hindering that board at all, causing any issues or anything else like that.
No, they have a majority, more than a majority, of members appointed and serving.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried to be postponed until next meeting.
Next meeting.
Resolution 2023-773, approval of one appointment to the Genesee District Library Board, a partial term of 8/31/25.
I nominate Julie Steffi.
Any other nominations?
I nominate Matthew Smith.
Okay, we have two nominations. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Ellenberg.
Julie Steffi.
Commissioner Brown.
Julie Steffi.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Steffi.
Commissioner Kuznel.
Steffi.
Commissioner Wayhill.
Steffi.
Commissioner Davis.
Matthew Smith.
Fisher Lloyd.
Steffi.
Commissioner Smith.
The vote is six for Steffi, two for Smith.
Okay, Julie Steffi has received the board appointment. Reports for standing committee, Board of Commissioners, Community Economic Development.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. We have a number of resolutions. I move 2023-682, approval of a grant award from the Michigan Department of Environmental, Great Lakes, and Energy in the amount of $900,000 to provide for infrastructure costs associated with collection of recyclable materials. The budget for the grant is attached.
Forward.
They moved and supported. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I move Resolution 2023-700, approval of a contract between Genesee County and Roe Professional Services Company in an amount not to exceed $336,639.56 for the purpose of conducting a US 23 corridor traffic study. The cost of this contract will be paid for, paid from account, and it's listed there.
Support. It's moved and supported. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Madam Chair, I move Resolution 2023-713, approval to extend the Emergency Solutions Grant CARES Contract to Family Promise in the amount of $34,997, and allow transfer of funds to provide additional funding for shelter operations. The cost of this contract will be paid from account, and it's listed there.
Forward.
They moved and supported. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Madam Chair, I move Resolution 2023-716, approval to extend Emergency Solutions Grant CARES Contract to My Brother's Keeper in the amount of $15,164.58, and allow transfer of funds to provide additional shelter operations. The cost of this contract will be paid from account, and it's listed.
They moved?
Forward.
It's supported. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
All right, our final resolution from Community and Economic Development. I move 2023-718, approval to extend Emergency Solutions Grant CARES Contract to Shelter of Flint in the amount of $15,164.58, and allow transfer of funds to provide additional funding for shelter operations. The cost of this contract will be paid from account, and it's listed.
Support. They moved and supported. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Any report from the chair?
No report tonight. Thank you.
I will move on to finance.
I move 23-646, approval of a proposed amendment to the 2324 Appropriations Resolution, transferring funds in the amount of $48,640 from the City of Davison rental agreement to the Capital Projects Fund.
Support. They moved and supported. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
I move Resolution 23-650, forwarding to receive and file a copy of the paid county bills for the weeks ending 9/10/23 and 9/17/23, in the total amount of $12,20889.11.
Support.
They moved and supported. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
I move 23-654, approval of purchase orders to Staples for the fiscal year, excuse me, ending in 2024, in an amount not to exceed $379,560.36 to provide for the annual office supply purchases. The cost of this purchase order is included in FYE 24 budget.
They moved and supported. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Move 23-658, approval of a proposed amendment to the 2324 Appropriations Resolution, reallocating expenditures within Head Start Funds.
Support. They moved and supported. They moved and supported. Any discussion? See yet none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move 23-681, approval of a purchase order to Michigan State Police for the fiscal year ending in 2023 in an amount not to exceed $51,000 for the purchase of the records management system. The cost for the purchase order will be paid from accounts ending in 9933.001.
Support.
They moved and supported. Any discussion? See yet none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Madam Chair, I'm going to move the next three resolutions because they're all similar, six, seven, and eight, approval of grant awards from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services for various amounts for the county's waterization assistance program.
They moved and supported. Any discussion? See yet none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Resolution 23-696, approval of requests to create posts and fill various positions at the Genesee County Parks and Recreation Commission.
Forward.
They moved and supported. Any discussion? See yet none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move 23-702, approval of a purchase order to Josh and Paper and Packaging for the fiscal year ending in 2024 in an amount not to exceed $205,540.14 to provide for the annual purchase of various janitorial supplies. The cost for this agreement is included in the 24 budget.
They moved and supported. Any discussion? See yet none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move 23-714, approval of a proposed amendment to the 2324 Appropriations Resolution in the amount of $61,723.04 to facilitate modifications to pay scales of judicial law clerk positions within the circuit and probate courts.
Support.
They moved and supported. Any discussion? See yet none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there any report from the chair?
At this time, Madam Chair.
Okay, we'll move on to Government Operations. Who's that? I don't even, we used to put them out here. We're looking it up.
I think it should be me, but I know I'm presumptuous and...
You can be. Yes.
Okay. We'll go through. Resolution 2023-535, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Easter Seals of Michigan in the amount not to exceed $285,000 to provide behavioral health services to youth and their families. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the accounts listed.
Support. They moved and supported. Any discussion? See yet none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move Resolution 2023-543, approval of a contract between Genesee County and Easter Seals of Michigan in the amount not to exceed $165,000 to provide intense family support services. The term of this contract is from October 1st, 2023 to September 30th, 2024. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the accounts listed.
Support.
They moved and supported. Any discussion? See yet none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move Resolution 2023-550, approval of a grant award from the State of Michigan Police Auto Theft Prevention Authority in the amount of $112,592 to provide for prosecution of cases involving automobile theft and related offenses. The 40% match is required for this.
Support. They moved and supported. Any discussion? See yet none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'll move Resolution 2023-583, approval of a purchase order to the Animal ER for the fiscal year ending 2024 in the amount not to exceed $35,000 to provide for after-hour surgical and medical needs. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the following account listed.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? See yet none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'll move Resolution 2023-618, approval of a purchase order to ESRI for the fiscal year ending 2024 in the amount not to exceed $37,730 to provide GIS software maintenance. The cost of this purchase order will be paid from accounts listed.
Forward. Support.
They moved and supported. Any discussion? See yet none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move Resolution 2023-636, approval...
That one's already been...
We did that one already.
Oh, we did that. I'm sorry. Dr. Brown made my job easier.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Resolution 2023-725, I'd like to move approval of the grant award from the State of Michigan Police in the amount of $1,405,391 to provide for the purchase of equipment and technology updates associated with training. The budget for this grant is attached.
They moved and supported. Any discussion? See yet none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there any report?
No report.
We'll move on to Human Services.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move Resolution 2023-387, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and the Disability Network in an amount not to exceed $225,000 to provide for ramp construction services. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the following accounts.
Support. They moved and supported. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Shoemaker, I'm sorry. I think it's this building.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Moving forward with this, if we could, I would like to maybe have the opportunity to go out to see one of the couple of these ramps. I mean, when we discussed in subcommittee the cost of these ramps, I mean, you know, I know just enough buck construction with my residential builders likes to be dangerous, but the dollar amount seemed to be a bit high for me, $5,700 per ramp. You know, I'm figuring the ramp that was built for my grandfather at one time, you know, and the size-wise, then I'm taking current lumber costs, and then I'm looking at the cost of the ramp total. I'd just like to see what they look like, see if it's something different than what I'm imagining. If we could, you know, I don't think it's going to affect this one, but as these are in construction, I would like to maybe have the opportunity. Or if they had pictures they could just send us of the ramps, that would be great.
I have one in my area that was just put up. If you'd like to get the address.
The address, that'd be great, but if you could get a couple.
Senior Services will provide those to you. They, Disability Network typically sends out to the commissioner where they put the ramp up their district. They send that information out to the commissioners, but I'm sure that Lynn from our Director of Senior Services will be able to provide you all of those via email. And they include pictures of the ramp.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other discussion? See yet none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'll move a Resolution 2023-606, approval of a grant award from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $2,507,854 for the purpose of continuing Genesee County's early Head Start expansion program. The budget for this grant is attached.
They moved and supported. Any discussion? See yet none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I move Resolution 2023-613, approval of modification number two of a contract between Genesee County and OLHSA in an amount not to exceed $2,755,539.44 to provide for an additional year for an early Head Start expansion grant, COVID funding, and rent. All other terms of this agreement remain unchanged.
They moved and supported. Any discussion? See yet none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I move Resolution 2023-645, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and the Human Development Commission allowing Genesee County to act as a lead agent for ordering and warehousing of USDA foods for the Emergency Food Assistance Program.
Forward.
They moved and supported. Any discussion? See yet none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I move Resolution 2023-647, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and the Regents of the University of Michigan, a Michigan constitutional corporation, to provide food service to children in their Early Childhood Development Center. The terms of this agreement is from October 1st, 23 to September 30th, 26.
They moved and supported. Any discussion? See yet none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I move Resolution 2023-662, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and the Michigan Department of Education to provide for the Emergency Food Assistance Program for the fiscal year ending 2024.
Support. They moved and supported. Any discussion? See yet none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I move Resolution 2023-663, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and the Saginaw County CAC for the purpose of ordering and warehousing USDA foods for the fiscal year 2024.
They moved and supported. Any discussion? See yet none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I move Resolution 2023-665, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and the Michigan Department of Education for the purpose of implementing the Commodity Supplemental Food Program for fiscal year 2024.
Support.
They moved and supported. Any discussion? See yet none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I move Resolution 2023-687, approval of a grant award from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $6,540 to provide for Genesee County's water assistance program. The term of this grant is through March 31st, 24.
They moved and supported. Any discussion? See yet none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I move Resolution 2023-691, approval of a grant award from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $379,393 to provide for Genesee County's water assistance program. The term of this grant is through March 31st, 24.
They moved and supported. Any discussion? See yet none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I move Resolution 2023-695, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and VAAA in an amount not to exceed $1,628,551 to provide for home-delivered meals to Genesee County seniors.
Support.
The cost of this agreement will be paid from the accounts listed.
They moved and supported. Any discussion? See yet none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there any report from the chair?
No report, thank you.
At this time, we'll go into Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Resolution 2023-686, approval of a purchase order to various vendors for the fiscal year ending 2024 in an amount, in a total amount not to exceed $125,000 to provide for vehicle and equipment, repair parts, and service.
Forward.
They moved and supported. Any discussion? See yet none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Madam Chair, Resolution 2023-697, approval of the 2024 seasonal positions at Genesee County's Parks and Recreation Commission.
Support.
They moved and supported. Any discussion? See yet none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Resolution 2023-705, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Image Soft in an amount not to exceed $161,035.38 to provide for annual software maintenance on the base. The term of this agreement is from October 1st, 2023 through September 30th, 2024.
Support. They moved and supported. Any discussion? See yet none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Lastly, Resolution 2023-732, approval of a purchase order to Burger Chevrolet for the fiscal year ending 2024 for the purchase of a Genesee County Motor Pool and Parks and Recreation Commission vehicles.
They moved and supported. Any discussion? Mr. Shoemaker.
In our last subcommittee meeting, Mr. Freeman was going to research and make sure we weren't having any policy issues moving forward with a van. I don't know if we'd come in.
We actually, yeah, we actually found a solution to that where it'll be a Chevrolet Traverse. We sent the team out. They looked at it, and they think that it'll work for us, so it's not going to be an issue. Rear, a rear load.
That's fine. You and I have a conversation about it afterwards. I would love to. I've never seen that, and I would love to understand how that works, so thank you so much.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there any unfinished business?
Nope.
Any new or miscellaneous business? At this time, I'll take a motion of a...
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If we have no other business, I do want to make a comment before we close.
Yes.
So I know that we normally read the information that you read when we go into public comment, and I know that we have a lot of residents across the county who view our meetings. I've received calls, as others do, thanking us for asking questions and the engagement that we have and that kind of thing. I think that's important. And so that's why I ask a lot of questions and such for the benefit of the residents in part. But I know, like, when we have meetings like tonight, where we've had a thorough committee meeting where questions, a lot of engagement, verbal exchange, questions answered, presentations from staff, that when we come to these meetings, there may not be questions. Like tonight, our questions were answered. And so I like for some consideration to be given, for us to have something that maybe we read before we go into our resolution portion of our full meeting so that residents who are viewing online that may not understand the committee process and that we've already discussed and kind of abated questions and that kind of thing, that they understand that we've had a committee meeting, questions have been answered, there's been engagement, just so they can kind of follow it better and not feel as if we're kind of running through handling the business with no exchange when we've had it in committees. Can't necessarily assume that everybody knows our process, and we do this on behalf of the public, and I just think it would be something good to consider so that when they view our meetings, they understand where we at at this part in the processing of these resolutions. That's all. We don't have to discuss it or debate it tonight. I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? See yet none? This meeting is adjourned at, what time is that, 6?
6:16.
6:16.